And welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. And just want to remind everyone that this is a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom, pursuant to one MRSA, section four zero three dash A. People can access the meeting, agenda, and materials related to a specific project by finding the links in the better notice or on the homepage of the city's website under public notices at SanfordMaine.org. So, welcome to the Sanford Planning Board November fourth, two thousand twenty meeting. The meeting will come to order. This is a public proceeding, and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you're unable to see or hear something. The board works from a prepared agenda and will consider tonight's agenda in the following order. One, new business file R eighteen dash forty-two NBD solar care of Holy and Tanner Associates. Two, old business file forty-one dash eighteen dash R Gentle Dental care of Fashi Midner. And three, old business file eighteen dash twenty dash S Coastal Oats LLC care of Ethan Scott. And number four, old business file sixteen dash twenty dash R Midtown Mall care of Ian All persons, uh, excuse me, please know that if any planning board members have potential conflicts of interest of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to come, um, to state your name and address and then proceed with the description of your project. At the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project thereafter. The chair will ask proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and then those who are neither for nor against, but who may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The chair may wait until after testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by public or board members. Please note that any rudeness, untethered behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated, and if these behaviors occur, the chair at her sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule it for another date. In addition, the chair at her discretion will limit repetitious comments, though it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments. The applicant will then be allowed to make a single rebuttal and response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impacts of a project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shore land, or zoning ordinances, and other relevant regulations. After the board votes on the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of fact. Since the findings may substantially affect any appeals rights and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within thirty days. The city's ordinances and comprehensive plan are available for viewing at the city's website in the Planning and Development Department office at nine one nine Main Street. So with that, we will, uh, move, uh, there are minutes, uh, for approval from October twenty first. I don't know if there are. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Thank you. Yes. Uh, roll call, please.
Jay?
Present.
Diane?
Present.
Lenny?
Present.
Jack?
Present.
Tom?
Here.
Here.
Jennifer?
Here.
Uh, there are seven, um, members here. That is quorum, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so now it's time for the minutes. I was looking at the agenda too fast. Um, so are there any revisions, uh, needed to the October twenty first minutes? I believe all members were present at that meeting, but let me double check.
Think you may have been missing.
I believe, this is Crystal, I believe I was missing that day.
Okay, and I was at that meeting as well. So then it will only be six of us voting.
Motion to accept the minutes, Jack.
Second, Tom.
And then roll call, please. Jay?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yeah.
Jennifer?
Yes.
That's six oh one extension, motion passes.
Great. Okay, that brings us to new business file R eighteen dash forty-two NBD solar care of Holy and Tanner Associates. And Beth, if you wouldn't mind, please orienting, uh, the board to this item?
Happy to that. While I'm doing that, Sean, would you like to post your plan to the screen share? Um, so, uh, the, uh, Site Plan Review Committee, uh, reviewed this proposal at this meeting yesterday, November third. Uh, this is a major site plan application on property owned by J.L. Odefred and C. Nickerson, uh, which is located at eighty-three Airport Road, Tax Map, um, R eighteen lot forty-two. Uh, the property is within the airport development zone, um, a wellhead protection zone and within the headwaters of Branch Brook. Um, the proposal is to construct a seven point five three three megawatt solar facility with an associated access driveway. Um, it proposes about a one point fifteen acres of impervious cover, um, and nineteen point two six acres of disturbed area, uh, which are together about eighteen percent of the hundred and seven acre lot. Additionally, fifty acres of the southern portion of the lot is, uh, proposed to be, uh, deed restricted as a conservation habitat, uh, based upon a main Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, uh, recommendation or condition of approval. Um, as I did mention, the Site Plan Review Committee, uh, did prepare, did review this project yesterday and has prepared a recommendation for you, which is in your, uh, was submitted yesterday in the packet. Um, and I believe the applicant is here, ready to make a more detailed presentation, um, to set up, uh, the, uh, public hearing.
Yes, good evening, members of the board. I'm Sean Toby with Hoyle Tanner, um, representing the project. The applicants couldn't be here tonight, but if there's any questions, I should be able to walk through most of the, anything that could come up. Uh, I just wanted to kind of start out, show an aerial on Google Earth with the red being the approximate property outlines, just to get you oriented as to where the project is located. Uh, so this is the hundred and acre, hundred and seven acre site. In two thousand and eight, the previous owner had gone through Site Plan Review with the city, as well as a DEP permit. We had actually done the work, and then the project kind of never really came to. Some of the construction started and nothing really kind of was finished or followed much of the plans. So as part of this with the new applicant, uh, we're going into this area, we really wanted to clean all this up and make everything that wasn't finished, uh, correct. And so as we started the project, we went out, I believe it was May, um, we went out and did all the wetlands for the site, created a good base plan. We coordinated with DIFW for any endangered species, and we worked around everything on the site to try to come up with the best areas to place the solar panels. This here are kind of the two main solar panels area, areas where we can get up to the seven and a half megawatts they were looking to do. The bottom, as mentioned, this crosshatch would be the fifty acre conservation easement to offset any impacts up here for endangered species. I believe it was the, the black racer snake, as well as two species of butterflies. And this area here is already an existing conservation easement, so DIFW was very happy to see this extended and pick up another fifty acres of that contiguous habitat. So as mentioned with the project, we would use the same gravel access road coming up, and we initially had proposed a gravel road, but in working with Mike, uh, the Assistant City Engineer, we are going to pave this access instead of having it be gravel, so that there's no concern of any sediment going out into the road here and causing issues in the bigger storm events. Any of this unfinished area will all be returned to loam and seed. Any of the, uh, trailers or pads or anything left on site will be removed, and all of this will just be restored to a nice grassed existing condition, let the trees grow back in. There is an existing airport beacon at the top of this hill with a, let me just go to the next one, it kind of zooms in a little more. There's an existing road that comes through. This access will be maintained. It'll just connect right into the existing road. And kind of, as mentioned, this dot hatch is anything that is gravel that will be restored to a grass or natural condition. And any of the storm water for the site will just be grass in between all the panels. It'll be mowed once or twice a year, and that will treat any runoff from the panels. And then there'll be a deed restricted stormwater buffer on this side of the road, as well as these pockets here to treat all the stormwater runoff from the site per, um, DEP standards. We are required to do a stormwater management law permit, which has been submitted to DEP and accepted, and then we're just waiting, uh, any final comments on that. So with the solar project itself, each one of these will be a ground mounted solar table, and then these individual rectangles are the solar panels. They'll all be fixed tilt twenty degrees, so they'll, they'll be on a set angle, they won't move, but they will capture the sun as it rotates through the sky. There'll be two inverters located here and here that'll collect all the DC power, invert it to AC, and that will run back down to the main entrance and connect to an existing pole at the street. A project of this size, seven and a half megawatts, will power approximately two to three thousand houses at full output, so it's a great benefit back to the town with the power, as well as very little draw on any of the public utilities. There won't be sewer, there won't be water, uh, there's no housing, so there wouldn't be any kids or burden on the school system, as well as it provides a good tax base back to the city. And I think at this point, I've kind of covered most of it. If there's specific questions to the project or the solar, or any other issues with the site, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this point, I'm actually, uh, opening the public hearing, uh, and, um, will ask if there are any, if there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of the project? Um, and so please use your raise hand feature, um, or if you're not muted, feel free to speak up. I'm not seeing or hearing anybody out there, so I will ask if there is anyone who would like to speak, uh, who is opposed to the project. Again, please use raise your hand feature or speak up. Okay, and finally, I'll ask if there is anyone who's neither for nor against the project, but who would, may wish to make a comment? Please use your raise the hand. Okay, I'm not hearing anyone out there, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing and then, uh, open it up to the board, uh, for discussion if there are any questions, uh, for the applicant.
Madam Chair, I have a couple.
Yeah, please go ahead, Diane.
I'd like to ask the applicant about the, um, just to go over the easement for the airport beacon. Um, I understand Mr. Costas kind of still owns it, or am I incorrect?
I'm not sure the owner of the actual beacon, it's on the adjacent parcel. Um, and then as far as the easement through this parcel, I don't believe it's a meets and bounds easement, I believe it's, um, just saying that there shall be access provided, and the applicant for this project is, is very willing to maintain that access. If we need to revise it to match this new roadway coming in, he'd be more than willing to make sure that's a, um, a clear defined easement, even if that's a condition of approval.
Okay, one of my other questions was, because this is a very, um, dated, um, beacon, even though it's in very good shape and well maintained, is there going to be any problems with that light coming from that beacon flashing off those panels in regards to airplanes, anything like that?
Yeah, so with this project, I, I probably should have mentioned that a little bit, there, there wouldn't be any issues with the light in the beacon. And then we also did, because of the proximity to the airport, we did what is called a glint and glare study, where they do an analysis of the panels, the runway approaches, the angles, and they analyze it for the whole three hundred and sixty-five days a year and the angles of the sun to see if there's any issues where there would be glare with pilots or any airport interference, and it was a pass, there's no issues with that. So any of the panels or the beacons, the sun angles, there won't be any glare that would impact the airport.
Okay, and my last question is, um, years ago, and I'm talking like early nineties or so, I don't know what it's like now, but there used to be either ATV or snowmobile trails in that area. Are they still existent or are they current?
There's, there's some trails, uh, kind of cut through the site. I don't know if, I don't think they're part of a trail system, I just think it's probably people out there, um, going around on ATVs. So in the bottom, bottom half of the conservation, we wouldn't be changing anything down there.
Okay, great, thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, Diane.
Sean, this is Jack Pecadum. Who's holding the conservation easement?
The easement will be to, uh, the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. So part of that easement is they would be allowed access through the site to monitor the species, uh, if there's selective clearing or reasons for them to be back there, they'll, they'll have access as well as, um, you know, control over what happens in there. And we're going to work with them to define the exact language, um, to make sure it's exactly what they want.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Lenny, I have a question.
Yeah, please go ahead, Lenny.
Yeah, is there a fence around the, uh, the entire property?
It won't be around the entire property, but it'll be around each of the two solar facilities. So this dashed with an X, that would be the fence that would go around the panels. And then each, each section of fence will have, um, a couple gates to get into it, and it's, it's primarily, you know, if someone wants to get in there, they could, but it's, it's primarily just to prevent any damage or, you know, to deter, um, access into there.
Okay, is that like a six foot or eight foot fence?
I believe it's a seven. Let me just check the detail. Seven foot is the standard that they use for these projects.
And is there any signage around the property to indicate what it is, or is there any, you know, like no trespass signs or anything like that?
Yeah, so throughout, throughout the fence, there will be, um, no trespassing, there'll be, you know, info on that, and then as part of the, the full solar packet for the building permit, they'll put a real detailed plan together, and that has a lot of additional signage that'll be on the fencing as well.
Are there questions or discussion from the board? Is the board ready to move to findings of fact?
This is Tom, I don't have any questions, I'm ready to move on.
Okay, great.
I'm ready to go.
This is Jase, I'm ready to go.
Okay, why don't we go for it? Why don't we, um, move to findings of fact?
Okay, so, um, the, let's do combinations first. Um, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point five pedestrian circulation. The recommendation is that the standard is not applicable, as no, no pedestrians will have access to the site. Uh, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nine sewage disposal. Again, the recommendation is that, uh, the standard is not applicable, as no sanitary waste disposal is necessary to support the project. Uh, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point thirteen exterior lighting, the recommendation is that the standard is not applicable, as there is no exterior lighting proposed on Um, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fourteen solid waste. Again, the recommendation is that the standard is not applicable, as no solid waste will be generated on the site post-construction, and waste generated by construction and placement of solar arrays will be removed, removed and properly disposed of. Um, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point sixteen shoreline relationship. The recommendation is that the standard is not applicable, because no improvement, no improvements are proposed within the shoreline zone, and that's it for the not applicable.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second it, Diane.
Roll call, please. Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yeah.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Jennifer?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh. Um, the next combinations, um, are two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point one, um, hold on, I'm going to go up and down my file here. Um, utilization of the site, the recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that fifty percent, excuse me, that fifty acres of the southern portion are, hold on, my computer just jumped on me. Um, that fifty acres of the southern portion of the site will be deed restricted as conservation habitat for north black, northern black racer snakes. The standard is met. Um, and then the second one in this combination is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eleven natural features. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition, with the same explanation.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second it, Diane.
Roll call, please. Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Think you muted, Jack.
Yes.
Tom?
Yeah.
Crystal?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh. Uh, the next conver, combination, hold on, I gotta make some notes here so I can go back and forth, two, three, six, and seven. The next combination is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point two, um, access to the site. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition, um, and the explanation is that with the condition that a note indicating trapped soils from construction vehicles on Airport Road shall be cleared, cleaned up, the standard is met. Um, the next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point three access into the site. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that the access driveway be paved for at least the slope profile area, and that winter access and slope of the grade be adjusted to reduce the need for ongoing maintenance, the standard is met. Um, the next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point six stormwater management. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that the applicant work with the Assistant City Engineer to assess the permeability of onsite gravel near the top of the driveway profile to reduce the flow of stormwater downstream toward Airport Road, and the applicant acquires a state stormwater law permit with an engineer's PE stamp, the condition is met. Um, and then the last one in this combination is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seven erosion control. Um, the recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that the applicant work with the Assistant City Engineer to minimize short and long term erosion and consider alternative erosion control products to line the base of the drainage ditch, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second it, Diane.
And a roll call, please. Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Um, Jack? Tom?
Yeah.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay, so the next combinations are, um, let me just make a note here and then we can dive into them, eight, twelve, and fifteen. Um, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eight water supply. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. Um, the explanation is that with the condition that Branch Brook is shown on the plans, the standard is met. Uh, the next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point twelve groundwater protection. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that the applicant complies with the applicable standards in two eighty dash fifteen dash one within source water protection areas, and the applicant submits all supplemental information as required by two eighty dash sixteen dash six point seven point two point four point seven for water supply protection to the satisfaction of the Superintendent of the Water District, the standard is met. Um, and then the last one in this combination is two eighty dash fifteen, excuse me, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fifteen landscaping. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that all project areas within the two hundred day zone utilize mechanical maintenance only, and no herbicides or pesticides shall be used, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second it, Crystal. Jennifer, was that you as the second?
Uh, that was Crystal.
Crystal, thank you.
She beat me, yeah.
Um, roll call, please, no hurry, Jase.
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay, and now we're down to the singles, so just give me one second while I get those noted. All right, so the first one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point four, um, which is, pick it up my document, internal vehicular circulation, the recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the proposal will provide the safe movement of emergency and other maintenance vehicles on site.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second it, Diane.
Roll call, please. Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yeah.
Crystal?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh. Um, the next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point ten utilities. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with provision of final details for connection to the CMP grid, the standard will be met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second it, Crystal.
Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Hold on, just one second, I lost my play. Yeah, hold on just one second, I lost my place. Uh, Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
The motion passes seven oh. The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seventeen. Um, hold on. Technical and financial capacity. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second it, Diane.
Roll call? Jase?
Yes.
Um, Diane?
Yes.
Um, Lenny?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh. The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eighteen buffering. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that a ten-foot buffer outside the fence be maintained by keeping grass cut and clear of trees, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Crystal. Roll call? Jase?
Yes.
Um, Diane?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Jennifer?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh. And the last one, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nineteen airport encroachment. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that the FAA determination of no hazard lettered is approved by the airport director and provided to the planning department, the condition is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second it, Diane.
Roll call? Uh, Jase?
Yes.
Uh, Diane?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Uh, Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Jennifer? Yes. Motion passes seven oh. Okay, so that's the findings. Madam Chair, there was a draft motion that was included in your packet based upon the recommendation from the Site Plan Review Committee. I'd like to suggest that there will be at least three changes, three sets of changes, and I'll point them out when we get to those items. If you'd like, I could read that motion for your consideration and then amendment before somebody makes a motion to approve. Yes, that would be great. Thank you, Beth. The site plan... So this is a motion that the Planning Board... Sorry, hold on a second. Very first mistake right there. The Planning Board accepts the information in the November third, two thousand and twenty summary report. And this is new. And in the Site Plan Review Committee, November third, two thousand and twenty, recommendation to the Planning Board. Grant the requested waivers and find that the proposed major site plan file R eighteen forty-two to construct a seven point five three three megawatt DC solar facility on a one hundred and seventeen acre property owned by J.L. Otterfred and C. Nicholson, the Currie-Davison Trust, and located at eighty-three Airport Road in Sanford, has satisfied the requirements of Article sixteen of the zoning ordinance subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. One, by November twenty-four, two thousand and twenty, unless other arrangements are made with the Planning Director, provide five copies of revised plans to the Planning Department that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, a paved access drive to be installed for at least the slope profile area on the access drive. B, assess the permeability of onsite gravel near the top of the profile and make adjustments in the plans to reduce the flow of stormwater down slope toward Airport Road to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. C, this one will be modified. Revised details to provide reuse of North American Green SC dash three fifty for ground cover fabric for all erosion control subject to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. Hold on just a second, I have to make an adjustment here. The second part of this is to revise the erosion control plan to include information regarding the... Actually, this is gonna be D. Um, excuse me, let me go back one more time. I'm sorry about this confusion here, guys. D, revise the erosion control plan to include information regarding cleanup of regularly tracked soil from contractor trucks on Airport Road. E, to show the location of Branch Brooks on all plans. F, to locate any easements for access across the property to the airport beacon on the plans and provide a copy of the easement language in a supplemental document. G, to add a note that indicates a Knox box padlock will be installed on the gate to the project site. H, to add notes and information as required by Section two eighty dash sixteen dash six point seven point two point four point seven and two eighty dash fifteen dash one regarding water supply protection, including but not limited to adding a note that all project areas within the location of the 200-day zone and watershed shall use mechanical maintenance only and that no herbicides or pesticides will be used on the site. Hold on just a second, I have to add that word in there. I, to identify a note... Or let's change that to provide a note indicating that a ten-foot buffer outside the fence will be maintained by keeping grass cut and clear of trees outside the fence line. Sorry, I'm getting there. Uh, number two, the applicant will work with the Assistant City Engineer to minimize short and long-term erosion. Number three, and this is new language, it's substantially the same, it's just using our consistent language. Submit a copy of the approved Maine Department of Environmental Protection stormwater permit to the Planning Department once secured, along with a copy of the approved plan. If it differs from the one approved by the Planning Board, a written description of any changes, and be prepared to seek an amendment to Planning Board approval should the... Should they... Should the DEP modification require? So... All right, I just messed up on something. Hold on, I have to require some... Alrighty, and then, um, four. Uh, and this is modified again, it's just editorialized. To submit a copy of a FAA determination of no hazard letter to the Planning Department. Five, the applicant provides an AutoCAD submission tied to the main state coordinate system, which is acceptable to the Assistant City Engineer. Six, to set up a pre-construction conference with the Code Enforcement Director and the Assistant City Engineer. Seven, the applicant provides a spill kit on-site in the event of a hydraulic line break, fuel, or oil spill as requested by the Kennebunk, Kennebunkport, and Wells Water District. Um, eight. A decommissioning bond in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and four cents, including a two percent inflation over a period of twenty years be provided. Nine, inspection ES grow for the amount of nine hundred and fifty-two dollars be provided. And ten, this approval is dependent on and limited to the documents and plans contained in the application submitted and affirmed to by the applicant. No project plan or development previously approved by the Planning Board may be altered or modified without securing prior approval of the Planning Board in the form of an amendment. Provided, however, that if at any time it becomes necessary or desirable to make modifications to the development, the Planning Director may approve minor modifications. Any change to the approved plan shall be provided to the Planning Department prior to construction to evaluate whether an amendment of the approval is required. The applicant shall be aware that noncompliance with this condition may require modification of construction elements that are not consistent with the approval, may delay release of all or portions of a performance guarantee, and may result in delay in receipt of a stop work order. That's it.
Motion to accept, that's written, Tom.
Second it, Diane.
Uh, and roll call, please. Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Jennifer?
Yes.
Alrighty, that's it. Seven oh. Motion passes. Great. Uh, is there anything else we need to share with the applicant before moving on? No, I think we're fine. They just... Okay. Tom, we'll be sending you out a letter that will detail all of this shortly. And then you'll need to provide the revised documents.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, have a great night. Okay, that brings us to Old Business File forty-one dash eighteen dash R. Dental Dental, care of Sashi Mizner. Beth, if you wouldn't mind orienting us to this agenda item briefly?
So, back on November sixth, two thousand and eighteen, the Site Plan Review Committee approved a minor site plan to build a new three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four square foot dentist office that replaced a demolished structure, that will replace a demolished structure on the property, which is owned by, I'm gonna hopefully not brutalize his name too badly, Jin Huang, located at Site fifty-four Main Street. A year ago, on September eighteenth, the Planning Board granted a one-year extension of site plan approval for the project. The applicant is now requesting a second one-year extension until November sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, to allow additional time to secure financing for the project. Section two eighty dash sixteen ten of the zoning ordinance indicates that construction shall commence within one year of approval unless the Planning Board extends that timeframe upon written request by the applicant and a finding that such an extension is consistent with current zoning provisions. In essence, what this intends is that if in the interim there has been an amendment of the ordinance that modifies anything related to submission of a site plan review and standards associated with approval, that you would not grant that extension, that in fact the applicant would have to go back through the review of the project. The applicant has submitted a written request through their agent, Sashi Mizner, and there have been no relevant changes in the zoning ordinance that would impact the Planning Board review of this project. So it is in your hands. In general, if you are comfortable with granting this extension, I would recommend you do so.
Is there a discussion from the board? I'm not hearing anything. So Beth, would we just take a vote on it then?
Yeah, if you could give me a chance, we just lost Kate and I'm trying to let her back in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think it's Kate that just texted me, unless it was Molly. Let me look. No, it was Molly that got booted out. So I'm gonna try to see if I can get Molly back into the meeting if you would just hold just one moment.
Oh, no problem.
Okay, I can't find you. Just let her know that. Okay, uh, Jase? Excuse me, was there a motion? I didn't...
Uh, no, I was just asking the process. So it sounds like we just need to take a vote if there is a motion in a second.
Yeah, a motion in a second and then a vote. We'll take care of it unless you have any specific questions for Sashi.
Motion to grant the extension, Tom.
Second, Jase.
On our roll call, please. Jase?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes seven oh. And I think we've lost Molly for good.
Thank you.
Oh, sure, I have a... I just noticed I had a button to admit her. I pressed it.
Oh, there it is, good.
I somehow became the host. I have no idea how. Or what that means. Okay, excellent. So we all move on then to Old Business File eighteen dash twenty dash S. Coastal Oaks LLC, care of Ethan Scott. And Beth, yeah?
Yeah, this item is not ready to come off the agenda. It was scheduled for the last meeting and we're still working with the applicant to get the missing material.
We will leave it on the table and continue on. To Old Business File sixteen dash twenty dash R. Midtown Mall, care of Eden Hossio. And I believe we're same situation here. This is on the table and is remaining on the table?
That is correct.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, with the applicant for Coastal Oaks, that one's still in a public hearing and that's still open, right? So this comes in front of us?
Um, I'm pretty sure you left it open.
Yeah, I did leave that one open.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us through hearings and business. And so Beth, Planning Director's report?
Um, I really only have one item for you today. Kate forwarded to you a notice about MMA's upcoming Planning Board training. It is scheduled for December fifteenth. I'm sure you all are gonna wanna go to a training session that close to Christmas. But in any event, I did wanna just point that out. We are asking people who would like to participate to be back in touch with us no later than noon this Friday, which I know doesn't give you a lot of time, but at least you have a couple of nights tonight and tomorrow night to think about it. And then, because we would like to put our reservations in starting on Friday. If you... If that deadline is troublesome for you, you're thinking you might wanna do it, but you're not quite sure, just send Kate and me an email and just tell us you'd like to have a couple more days and I'm sure we can make those arrangements. I just don't wanna let it drag out. I'm thinking there's probably not gonna be a lot of you that want to participate. It's not gonna be a lot different than what you've been. I know that Crystal has not been able to attend one yet, but I'm hoping she'll be able to attend. Molly will be attending it and if we have a Planning Board member there, I will probably attend it as well with Molly. And then there may be another one or two people who may participate. But anyway, so that's just my heads up to you guys and an encouragement to, if you have not done one of the training yet or you'd like a refresher, to go ahead and do that. The city will cover your, you know, the registration fee for you. Other than that, it's a bit crazy.
Other than that, it's, um, it's a bit crazy, um, we're, we're working hard, we're getting a lot of applications coming in, you're seeing a bunch of them, but there are others that you will be seeing in the coming, um, a couple of meetings. Um, uh, it's sort of a normal rush to get things in before the end of the, uh, construction season, but there are other things that are just, you know, they're doing their due diligence and getting their work done now with the intent of starting construction in the spring. Um, uh, Molly and I have been working pretty hard on the, uh, comp plan inventory chapters, um, we're not as far along as we'd like to be, but we are making reasonable progress. I'm hoping that by December, um, I'll be able to give you a bit of a more detailed update of where we are, I'll put that on a work session, if that's okay with you and the Chair. Um, and, uh, you know, we are doing quarterly presentations to the City Council, we just did one about a week or so ago, um, and we have, uh, four chapters largely done, we're working on, between the two of us, we're working on four, uh, others, um, Molly is doing the lion's share of the work. We're also working with our contractor to refine the, uh, public engagement process, um, and the online platform that we are trying to develop to help support that, both for information exchange and also, um, to serve, uh, as a basis for our, um, our work sessions, our workshop, since it's very likely that we'll still have, um, limits on the number of people who can congregate indoor, you know, inside, um, for meetings like that. Um, that's, uh, it's, and at that same time, I hope to have a better sense of when we might likely have that, um, the, the draft inventory is prepared and we can be starting to have conversations, um, with you in particular about the recommendation we'd like to make the city, you'd like to make the City Council about, um, the Advisory Committee. Um, so we, I don't wanna shortchange that conversation, um, it'll be, I'm assuming it's gonna be a good forty-five minute to one hour conversation to answer all of your questions and go back and forth. I, maybe, maybe it'll fall into place quicker, but I don't wanna shortchange it. If you wanna dig deep into this, then we wanna have a time, uh, ready for you to do that, because your recommendation is what we wanna bring to the City Council in terms of the appointment of the Advisory Committee. That's pretty much it for me. Oh, I should tell you, Molly just passed her six-month, um, uh, anniversary with the city, um, um, and, um, you know, we're still going through the evaluation process, but, um, very generally, um, I'm very, very pleased with her performance, I hope you are as well. If you have any particular comments, uh, positive or negative, uh, please feel free to, or, or suggestions, maybe not negative, but some suggestions, please feel free to send those along to me. Um, uh, obviously, most of what you're seeing in the written material is Molly's work. Um, um, so that'll give you a sense of, of whether you can say, oh, we like this, uh, this modified format, or we don't like it, or please do this, or please don't do that. Um, we're all ears, um, and that's not just for right now, whenever that occurs, if there's something that comes up, obviously, my, uh, my door and my telephone and my email are open to you, um, and trying to be responsive. That's pretty much it, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Um, is there, uh, any communications from anyone? Off the quiet. So, um, I know, uh, bef, before we go ahead and adjourn there, there is, um, a tentative work session, um, if, uh, m, maybe, uh, before, so we'll adjourn the meeting, formal part of the meeting, and then if we wanna, um, kinda chat about the work session, how and if we wanna approach that this evening. Does that sound okay?
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
Thank you Diane, I'll second that. Uh, unless anybody disagrees, we will go ahead and adjourn the formal, uh, meeting.